The December 8th, 2025 Ohio County Board of Education meeting is hereby called to order at 6:00 PM. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance to the flag of our country. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Welcome, everyone. Dr. Miller, would you like to give us superintendent's information?
Yes, I'd like to welcome everybody here as well. I want to start off by congratulating Karen Butine, who was selected by the West Virginia Department of Education to sit on a panel where counties from across the state have looked to her for guidance and guidance as to how to get their communications up to par. Just as another reminder, our parent meeting, our parent advisory meeting will be held tomorrow at 4:30 in this room. I wanted to take a few minutes, received, I know several of you in this room have attended Ryan Stanton's History of Wheeling class, but received this letter and thought I would want to, I wanted to share this with you. Wanted to reach out to you to share something with you and Ryan. "I began attending History of Wheeling lessons alone when they first started. I invited my sister and her husband last winter, and unfortunately, my brother-in-law passed away unexpectedly in January that same year. He dearly loved the few lessons he attended. He was only 60, and he looked so forward to attending more." I'm telling you this because these lessons give folks not only a chance to learn about wheeling, but also to spend time together once the lesson is over, as we always drove around wheeling with different set of eyes and had lunch. Essentially, these lessons are connecting people. My sister and I still attend, and now my nieces attend too. It seems people have a lot to offer, and Ryan's forum gives them a chance to share stories or items. I am also sure that some of these stories from the audience enlightened Ryan too, who in turn enlightens his students. It just comes full circle. I feel it honors our elderly generation as well. I'm not sure if you both realize how important these lessons are to the public. I have seen one gentleman who was over 100 years old attend monthly, no matter what the weather is like. And also, and also each month, my sister, niece, and I watch a couple pull in, have a McDonald's breakfast sandwich and coffee, and then he rides inside of his wheelchair as one of his legs are amputated, again regardless of what the weather is like. As a teacher myself, I can see the impact that teachers have on folks of all ages and new light. Unfortunately, we do not often feel valued or supported much these days. I would so like to see, I would so like it if you could share this with Ryan. Yes, we clap when the lesson is over, but all you deserve is standing ovation for the job that you are doing. It means so much to many of us. And I thought it's important to share good stuff with our board."
Indeed, thank you.
Yes. Also, I would like to share with the board that today I had the amazing opportunity to attend EdTalk 2025 with the West Virginia Teacher of the Year Tiffany Barnes, who is a teacher at Wheeling Middle School. She spoke in an EdTalk with President Benson from WVU, and she had people in tears. She talked about the power of bridges and mentorship and opening businesses and shouting opportunity and giving students an opportunity and chance by connecting people, businesses with our students. So it was very powerful. People had tissues. I didn't know what was going on. It was a really great opportunity. And finally, I was chosen to come and speak to the Joint Standing Committee on Education with both Senator Grady and Delegate Ellington. They are giving superintendents across the state of West Virginia the opportunity to look at West Virginia Code 18 and West Virginia Code 18A and how it dictates how we run our public school system. We narrowed it down to creating opportunities for flexibility in our public schools, lifting personnel timelines in state aid formula. So I think it was well received. We spent a good hour and a half speaking with several delegates and senators and look forward to them coming back. Following the presentation, we stayed for a significant amount of time as many people had different questions of, and ideas because they really weren't 100% sure what goes on behind our doors. So it was a great opportunity. We are very thankful. I've been in this job 10 years, and this is the first time we've been invited to the table. So we look at this as a positive move and look forward to the next steps.
Great. Any questions for Dr. Miller? All right, we are going to move on to item three on the agenda, the Parade of Champions, beginning with McKinley Architecture and Engineering.
I feel like we've had such a long relationship together.
Does Mr. Delatorre have, there we go.
Before they get started, I do want to thank Mr. Delatorre, Mr. Doyle. I can tell you, these two gentlemen have helped us by holding our hand through many, many processes of attaining money to support our school system outside of our dollars and outside dollars and kind of making sure that we get our things accomplished in a specific amount of time and properly. So I want to thank both of you, and I really appreciate all the time and effort you've given us for almost 10 years.
Wasn't that long?
Almost 10 years.
Well, thank you for this opportunity. We wanted to just take the time to, number one, thank you for having us and working with you through this process. It was a lot of fun. And we thought we'd just reminisce a little bit about the past 10 years, and then Sean will have the presentation for you. But again, we started out with a project that was a $75 million project. It was a $42 million bond, $27 million additional dollars from the SBA. It still stands as the largest single grant that the SBA has ever awarded to any school county in West Virginia, and then $6 million in SFR funds. Unique about this is that we touched all 13 schools. So every, every, every building, every student saw the benefit of this bond, which is, which is unique. It's a challenge. We do a lot of these bonds across the state, and that was, and that was something that was very proud of. At the end of the day, we ended up in $10 million projects. We added the SFR that was there. So.
And so, again, again, we were just proud of those accomplishments. Just to take you backs down the lane, Rick and Kim, you'll probably remember these. You know, this, this was the playbook we, we ended up with, and there's some, there's the rendering that's resolutely, was resolutely rejected. So we thought that we'd keep that in there.
We're told this.
I don't know if you remember these days, those countless meetings. When we started out, we started out with over $200 million in possible projects around the county, and we had to whittle it down to something that was palatable to the county and to the board. And so there was a lot of, a lot of time spent, spent in that room. And then the public meetings, you know, the countless public meetings that we attended to inform the bond, that formed the community, what was involved in these projects. And again, more public meetings that were attended, which led to Election Day, when, when the bond was passed. And we're proud of this. It was passed with over 60% of the vote, and led, led to where we are today. So Sean's going to go over some of the projects that, that were involved.
Yeah, reiterate Ernie's gratitude for being here. I started with McKinley in 19, and I had no idea that it would lead me to the last six to seven years being connected with Ohio County schools. Obviously, many of you know, I grew up in Ohio County. My children attend the schools. Zach walked in, and I was like, it's timely tonight, because I was just looking back at the list of board members. There's just a fourth, I think four different boards actually worked through this whole process. So it's really cool. And yeah, just highlighting some of the project highlights that many of us were part of, the addition at Tridelfia, which again, I get to see the benefit of that now with a sixth grader there, and it's a beautiful facility. The Wheeling Middle School Maker Space, the Woodsdale Elementary School Cafeteria. My daughter's with me today and saw this. She was like, that's my cafeteria. Obviously, the kids get the benefit of that. And the entrance, which came out beautiful. And again, I talk to people so regularly. I spend a lot of time in the school walking in, just how reimagined the entire school was. It opened up what was once a really closed in space with not, not a lot of natural lighting, and now you walk that building, and it's truly been transformed. The athletic fields, right? Not only the students at the school, but just the community that continues to get the benefit of this. The entryway that we just talked about, the, what are we looking at here?
ILC.
Oh, the ILC, yeah. The ILC at Park. And we use so much of this, we use so, so many of these photographs and designs when we go out and market now because the space became incredible. The music space, and I think we have a couple more. The science labs, which was, was a lot of discussion. The wrestling room, near and dear to me. And then lastly, as I just, as I talked to Dr. Miller over the past few months and throughout, was just that I know for us as a design firm, one of the greatest challenges, Ernie's talk that started at 200 million, is how to be responsible with the amount of money you have and spend it in a way that you can be proud of it. The residents in the community know that the leadership's been responsible and spent the money well, and obviously, the board being the driver behind that. I know Ernie and I, for the last six months, have wanted to come here and celebrate. The bond projects are done. We're still finishing a roof project with the county, and Ernie opened it up with how much we appreciate and enjoy being able to work with the county that we work in. So we do have a small gesture here. We had it framed. I think I've worked to get it similarly framed, everything in the board office and sized. It does have a number of the project highlights with all the boards that served throughout the duration and just a little narrative around the work done. So, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you. I'm just going to stand right here and hold for the rest of the night.
There you go.
We were hoping for a big check.
Mr. Kraft, do you mind if I say something?
Oh, yeah.
Real quick. Quick, okay. I just wanted to reiterate what Kim said. These guys have been awesome to work with. As you can imagine, through the entire, there's a lot of arguing and disagreements and everything else, and they handle all of it tremendously professionally and just did an outstanding job with all of it. And then today, Ms. Daler shared with us how they came up and did a speaker series that she put together at Park, and we had a student walk out of there with an internship that day at McKinley. So that's awesome. And anytime that we ask McKinley for anything to help a student or a program that we're doing, they're always the first in line to donate. So just thank you.
Thank you.
Well, and I appreciate the partnership we've had. You know, this, I'm coming to the end of my second term. You guys have been around the entire time. As Rick said, there's been some ups and downs of just some challenges we've had to overcome. The only request that I have is that we had talked in different occasions that, you know, at one point, we had published, here, here's the different facilities. Here's what we're going to do. Here's the cost. I'd like to publish that again and then have something on the next page of, here's what we did, and here's what it costs. Because I think the public should know really what we promised and what we did. I think that's fair to the public to see that. So we'll, I'll circle up with you guys and talk about how to pull all that together. But it, couldn't have done it without you, and it's really a testament that you used those slides as a presentation, and you know, that's what we call home. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Of whom?
Mr. Jeff.
Okay.
Yeah.
Come on, Mr. President.
The meeting is now adjourned.
I second. I make a second motion.
Catch up next week or next week.
I second that motion.
It is.
Oh, yeah, you go.
You don't need that anymore.
Page your technology. You don't need that.
Yeah.
Got it.
That was a commercial break.
Oh, we adjourned.
Teeny tiny commercial breaker.
It's all good stuff.
It's great.
Okay, moving on to Parade of Champions, Ike Adorholz.
Remember that part about putting you on the spot?
Members of the board, Dr. Miller, thank you guys for having us. It's always fun to get to come and celebrate our student athletes, especially when they're at this level. I, I shared when I was up here with Brenna, soccer has become much more loving in my world. My daughter's playing now, and so I went to several of the games this year, and it was just blown away by Ike and his talent and what he brings to the field and the energy and so much passion. So it's been a pleasure to watch him play. I have little doubt of why he was voted State Player of the Year, but I will let Coach Mario kind of dig into those stats and, and explain why this is the best soccer player in the state of West Virginia.
Thank you for having me. Done this three years in a row. Tres for two years, and you know, Ike, Ike is a great team player. He was a big leader of the group this year that had a lot of success. And you know, Ike's not the, the big flashy goal scorer that Tres was, but he brought a lot of different talents to the game that separated him from the other players. And his effort, his, his passion for the game, his compete level was always at a very high level. Just a little story about Ike. I mean, we played Woodrow Wilson this season, and they were ranked number one in the state. They were at time ranked really high in the nation, and they were undefeated. It was the last regular season game. So we knew that it was going to be a challenge. And you know, Ike was one of his best games he played. I mean, he didn't score, but when he, we won the game, which was exciting. But when he walked off the field, his face was so white, his lips, I mean, he gave every ounce of energy that he had, and that's how he played all year. And he did that every game, and other coaches noticed that. I mean, these awards are based off of what other people think of him. I mean, I'd have the State Player of the Year every year.
Yeah.
But, but you know, they, they saw that, and they saw his passion for it, and they saw his leadership out there. And you know, I think Ike would, would also recognize the team. This was, this team added a lot of excitement and re-energized me. I was thinking about giving it up, but I'm, I'm going to stick around for a little bit longer. And it's because of them, and it's because of Ike and players like Ike. You know, they worked so hard in practice. They, they came. We challenge them, you know, by asking them to do things. And I've learned to let them have a little say in, in game planning and things like that. And because they're out there, they see what's going on. And Ike's one of the better ones doing that in the, in the four years that I've been coaching. He knows our good players. He knows their strengths and weaknesses, and we talk about those things. And you know, I, I look at Ike and I see a player that, you know, was conflicted a little bit earlier, you know, because of opportunities with Beedling and MLS Next. And he did come and played high school soccer, which I think it became pretty important to him. And he showed that throughout his growth as a player. And you know, I, I talked to the coach from Musselman, who we beat in the regional finals. They had never seen him play. He couldn't believe how good he was. You know, we went to the state tournament. He did his thing down there. We felt, came up a little bit short. But after every game, people were just like, he is everywhere. He just does so much for your team. And you know, he, he really, I think that's what separated him, because there's a lot of good players in our state. And I think a lot of them score goals. A lot of them do a lot of good things. But he brings that extra to the table. And that, that's what separated. And we were surprised. I mean, I talked to him the whole time through. I'm like, you know, we, we just had this kid, you know, Tres had got all these goals and broke every record. And three years in a row is going to be tough. There's other good players out there. And you know, when he won, I just, we hugged and at the banquet, and I just said, you did it. This was all you, you know? And that, that, that means a lot to me. And Ike, come over here, let these guys know, you know, everything about your season, and hopefully, it was a lot of fun.
Yeah. Hello, everybody. I want to say thank you for all the congratulations and all of that. I want to say that obviously, it sounds basic, but I couldn't have done it without the team. These guys aren't just my teammates. They were actually my best friends before we played soccer together. Like, it was, it was like a family out there. It was really great, and I could not have done it without all of them. The season was really good. What was our final record?
Eighteen and four.
Eighteen and four. Two teams that we lost to were out of state. So we only lost to one team the whole season in West Virginia, twice, unfortunately. But, but that's a remarkable season, obviously. And last year was also great. This has just been a really great group of guys I've been able to play with, a lot of talent on the team. Yeah, it's, I've, I can confidently say I've never had this much fun and this much passion playing soccer ever in my life than this year. And that's, feels good to say that, even though we didn't win at all, like we, like we hoped. I can walk away and still be happy because of the season. And that's, that's the most important thing. So, that's all.
Thank you, Ike. Congratulations. Any questions for Ike from anybody?
Yeah, but it's, it's pretty obvious, Ike, that you're a winner. And it's loud and clear.
Thank you.
And we appreciate everything that you have done for Wheeling Park.
I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Come back and coach.
Yeah.
I'm not kidding.
What are your future plans?
I'm going to go play Grove City College next year. And yeah, I'm not sure when I'm studying yet, but I'm definitely going to play. Yep.
Awesome.
Good luck.
Good luck. Yeah, that's awesome. Could use another lawyer in your family.
Yes.
All right, item four.
Oh, sure, yeah.
They did it before.
Yep.
We had it under control.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, moments for mission. Molly, can you pick us off?
Sure, yeah.
Recover for a little minute.
Oh, I got you.
That's kind of a nice moment.
That was, yeah.
I didn't want to break it up at work.
Thank you. Obviously, congratulations to Isaac, my son. Very proud of you as a mom, but also just as a board member, to see our students be successful is always very gratifying. So congrats. I want to wish our winter sports teams good luck as they start their season. And the speech and debate team has been off to a good, strong start as usual. So wish them luck as they continue on with their tournaments. That's all.
Thank you, Molly Anne.
I just like to say too, congratulations on that. It's always great for our students to bring home the gold, the trophies, the, the championships, and, and that's a wonderful feat that you've done there. That's great. And I'd also like to say to the county itself being a backing for all of our students, our teachers, and our staff. And I didn't even know we had a pickleball group. I mean, Ohio County Schools has tried to keep up with the times, and people, I think people need to realize that this is the place to be and to have your students. In Ohio County, we try our best, the teachers, the, everybody, the staff, the coaches and everything, to get these students to make them the pride of Ohio County. And like I said, clear down to a pickleball club. So I want to thank the community and, and like I said, our staff is trying their best. And please look into Ohio County Schools as the place you want to be. Thank you.
Thanks, Anne. Andy.
First of all, congratulations again, Ike. That's outstanding. We're very proud of you. I'm sure your mother is feeling upset about you didn't start crying.
Oh, I almost did. That's why I had to cut it short.
Secondly, I think what Dr. Miller is doing right now is exemplary. The fact that she was asked to come down and share her perspective on education with state representatives speaks a lot for Ohio County Schools. It speaks a lot for her, that her expertise and her opinion and values, and her perspective on, on education in general is something that we are very lucky to have as our, as our leader. So thank you, Dr. Doyle, for all that you're doing.
This is, this is kind of a, Christmas time is a nostalgic time for me. Forty-five years ago today, my son was born. And I can remember walking the halls of the hospital. My wife was in labor for 35 hours, and because my son was stuck. And, and the other reason I bring this up is because I think understanding as a board member, and seeing Ike here today and his mom on the board, we are in this for, we are board members because of children. We like what we do. We like children. We want the best for them. And when I sing happy birthday to my son later on today, I'll just thank my lucky stars that I have a, a great young man as a son. So thank you.
Thanks, Andy. Bernie.
Yeah, I just, kind of like Dr. Miller talked about, I actually was able to attend History of Wheeling on Saturday. It was, it was amazing. I mean, I just, every time I go, I'm just amazed by Mr. Stanton. But I, he did answer one question that, it was about signs, the different signs around wheeling. And the burning question in my mind was, dude, how many signs did you steal to get all these signs? But he did halfway through give the disclaimer of, these signs are all legitimately purchased and gained. So I was glad to hear that. And Ike, congratulations. I, I think everybody wants to know, did you get your talent from your mom or dad? But we won't make you answer that question. And just best of luck to the winter sports. I agree. You know, it's hard to believe that we're, we're coming up on the end of the, end of the year, but it's good. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Bernie. I attended Mr. Stanton's class as well. Cold December morning, we had over 110 people show up. It was really quite impressive. And the, the relationship he has with the crowd is really interesting because he, it's very interactive. Ike, congratulations. People talk about your athletic ability. I think the competitive nature is equally between your parents, as a friend of both of them. And, and just piggybacking on what Andy said, you know, the nice thing, Ohio County leads the way in this state, and we couldn't do that without Dr. Miller's leadership and her entire team and the board. So you know, we should all take a victory lap and just keep going to work and, and making us better. Mr. Abraham, Commissioner Abraham was part of that movement at one time until he deserted us. But he knows the drill, and, and you know, we, we take a lot of pride in what we do. And we don't always see eye to eye on everything, but we do have a common denominator. It's how do we raise the bar of education in Ohio County? So, item five, personnel, Dr. Miller.
Yes. It is with sadness that I share with the board that Amy Minch is retiring. Her current position is a 261-day attendance director assigned to Central Office effective June 30th, maybe. Ms. Minch has been employed with the Ohio County Schools for 32 years. I can remember the day that Ms. Minch and I both put our hand into the coffee can to pick what number we would be for seniority. We were hiring, we have the same starting date. So congratulations to Amy. We certainly value all of her years of expertise and hard work and dedication to Ohio County Schools. Also, congratulations to Stephanie Ferguson, who is retiring from a position as a 200-day elementary teacher assigned to West Liberty Elementary School effective June 30th. Ms. Ferguson has been employed with the Ohio County Schools for 30 years. Also, would like to congratulate Wayne Stid from his degree status upgrade from a master's 45 to a doctorate degree at Warwick Middle School. Huge congratulations. And also, if the board could look at item number eight, Genevieve Frye is being recommended as a middle school Bex Robotics Coach at Tridelfia Middle School, and all other personnel as presented.
Thank you, Dr. Miller. Are there any questions?
I just have a comment, Mr. President. First of all, Wayne Stid was one of my teachers, and he was kind of a rookie when I, when I first was principal with Mr. Stid. But what a wonderful young man, what a great teacher he is. And I'm really happy that he's moved his way up to get his doctorate. Her current position is a two-sixty-one day attendance director assigned to central office effective June thirtieth, maybe. Um, Ms. Minch has been employed with the Ohio County Schools for thirty-two years. I can remember the day that Ms. Minch and I both put, put our hand into the coffee can to pick what number we would be for, uh, seniority. We were hiring, we have the same starting date, so, um, congratulations to, uh, Amy. Um, we certainly value all of her years of expertise and hard work and dedication to Ohio County Schools. Also, congratulations to Stephanie Ferguson, who is retiring from a position as a two-hundred day elementary teacher assigned to West Liberty Elementary School effective June thirtieth. Ms. Ferguson has been employed with the Ohio County Schools for thirty years. Also, would like to congratulate Wayne Stid from his degree status upgrade from a master's forty-five to a doctorate degree at Warwick Middle School. Huge congratulations. And also, if the board could look at item number eight, uh, Genevieve Frye, uh, is being recommended as a middle school Bex Robotics Coach at Tridelfia Middle School, um, and all other personnel as presented.
Thank you, Dr. Miller. Are there any questions?
I, I just have a comment, Mr. President. Uh, first of all, Wayne Stid was one of my teachers, and, uh, he was kind of a rookie when I, when I first was principal with Mr. Stid. But what a wonderful young man, what a great teacher he is, and I'm really happy that he's moved his way up to get his doctor. He even grew a beard, so it really makes him look older and more doctorian. The other comment I have is about, I was amazed at all the teachers who had signed up to do, uh, the history club, the math counts, the science bowl, the speech and debate, uh, you know, we have, I can't say enough about the teachers stepping up to the plate and assuming these extra responsibilities. Um, I, I know being at it when I was a middle school principal, what that takes. Uh, it takes a lot of time and energy, and our kids deserve to have these people, uh, share their expertise with them about, uh, all those things, history, math, science, speech, et cetera. So, thank you to those teachers. That's it.
Okay. Any other questions for Dr. Miller? Hearing none. May I have a motion to accept our personnel recommendations as presented?
Second.
I have a first, I have a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Uh, we're gonna change the agenda just a little bit. We're gonna take seven point two from the consent agenda, which will now be six point one on reports and follow-up, which is gonna be MOU, Ohio County Development Authority, Ohio County Schools, and Hassel. Uh, Commissioner? And team? Thank you.
Hi, Dr. Miller and, and board. Um, it's, I'm excited to be here tonight with, um, this opportunity. Uh, it was brought to our attention and a lot of conversations in the community about finding ways to prepare our students for post-graduation plans and finding a way to connect our students to local opportunities. Um, and through a lot of those conversations, we've built things like our speaker series and our luncheon learns and our project partners, uh, the internships that we were mentioning through, um, McKinley that are, that are coming to be. And so, when this, um, kinda startup was brought to our attention and the ability to build it together to support our kids, it really kinda struck a chord with what we were already trying to do. As just a reminder, the state has now required us to provide personal finance to every single student coming through the building. That'll start with, uh, next year's junior class. So, we are working right now on building that personal finance class, and a large part of it, because it's a full credit, it's a full year, uh, we really want the second semester to be a personalized, project-based experience for our kids to really dig into the, uh, career clusters, uh, require them to attend speaker series, require them to go to luncheon learns, um, and that's really where this platform, I think, is gonna be really valuable to us. So, uh, through the work that Joel's been doing, and we will do and build together, um, this is gonna connect our kids to opportunities here in the Valley, uh, to help them find the resources that they need, the opportunities that they need. Uh, so we are really excited to build this relationship and work together and, uh, incorporate it into that course that we are starting next year.
Superintendent Miller, President Croft, members of the board, um, members of the Ohio County School System team. It's nice to be back again. It's good to see all of you. And, uh, we're here excited about this, and we've had the pleasure of working with Ms. Taylor and Ms. Butine and some others, Jeanie Prince from the Education Alliance. And, um, we, uh, at the, at the Ohio County Development Authority, um, we had created, we had a vision. The vision was, how do we, part of growth and retention is to increase population and also to retain people within the county. Uh, there's lots of variety of reasons why that's important. Um, one of the things is, is we hired through a collective group of organizations, um, to, we hired a growth and retention manager, uh, and that is Stephanie Hockenberry. So, I'll let Stephanie talk a little bit about that, and then Tisane Joel and how he fits into the picture here. But, in essence, we are trying to figure out ways, and this platform allows to connect students to organizations and businesses, either through job shadowing and/or through internships. How do we connect them to what's going on in our community? In terms of what do they have to see, why, why do they wanna be here? Right? Unless you know somebody and say, "Hey, does somebody have an internship?" Or you know Ernie or know, you know Sean to get an internship at McKinley, you probably don't know where to start. This platform's designed to match skill sets, match, match what organizations and businesses are looking for, and then connect the students in such a way that will also be pragmatic way to educate them as well. So, this is one of the, our larger initiatives within the county. Um, we just, so happens to be through the Ohio County Development Authority, but the commission's behind it as well. So, I've been on the forefront of this for a long time, along with Stephanie and Tisane. So, with that, I have a couple other comments I'd like to make. One about Ike is that, um, I had the pleasure of watching him play, and his leadership on the team was great. Um, and also, he learned one important valuable thing this year. And he, if you, if you know Ike, well, as a youngster, he always was walking around with a cast or a sprained ankle or something. He was always injury prone. And so, but this year, he learned how to take his ankles, and he really did a phenomenal job of making sure that that worked for him, too. Um, and I also wanna just make one comment about the bond, uh, and all the schools that were touched. And when we started that process, uh, it was a collective effort, and the board, the boards that've come behind us have done a wonderful job, so thank you for contributing to that mission. And, um, it's just really important that every school is touched, because we do this for the kids. We do this for the kids. Even, even though I, you say I abandoned you, David, I didn't. I just did an extension of what, we're just doing different things. Uh, we're, it's all for the benefit of the community and for the kids. So, with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Stephanie Hockenberry, who will talk a little bit about the, the mission.
Thank you so much, Zach. Dr. Miller, Mr. President, members of the board, thank you so much for having us. Meredith, thank you so much for the nice, um, comments there at the beginning. We've been working for almost two years on this. Well, I have, I think Zach's been working quite a bit longer on it, but I have had the pleasure of working in the growth and retention, um, arena for the last two years. And, um, it is very personal to me. I have two young children in the Ohio County School System. One is a freshman at Park, and one is a sixth grader at Tridelfia. And they are also trying to find their way and figure out what they will be doing and, and what makes them tick and, and happy and all the things. So, um, to be able to extend, um, you know, some of what we're doing for my own children is also a very personal, um, uh, great task that I get to be a part of. So, thank you for, um, allowing us this opportunity. The, the, the connecting platform that Tisane has created, um, is really something that was missing. And in all the conversations that we've been in, um, you know, we, we hear all these people that have wonderful opportunities to share with students, but they don't know who to reach out to, or what, what can we get this out with? Like, what kind of message platform? Can we email someone? Who's the person? Um, so that the, um, I guess the, the factor that has been, um, the, the main factor has been, like, how do we create that connection, right? So, Tisane's platform has allowed that, and we are lucky that, um, he came into our lives very, um, kind of, I'd say the stars kind of aligned that day. Uh, Zach and I were having a very serious conversation about creating a platform like this, and I said, "Well, I am not very techie." Um, you know, I, I, my, I'm pretty old, and so I said, you know, "My kids can teach me that stuff." Um, but, uh, through the RISE initiative that we're on, um, Tisane had been in the Wheeling University offices, and just, we made a connection. And really, that's what this town is about. And I heard all of you speaking about this earlier and the community and the connections. And really, when you look at it, community and connections is really what makes Wheeling and Ohio County so different from other places. We hear it all the time in meetings that we're at, um, in economic development, in the school systems, um, and, and that's really the special connecting piece here. So, um, we were connected through, um, Amber Poole at Wheeling University, and he came in, and when he called me, I have to tell you this really quick, funny story. I'll make it quick from Mr. Croft. He called me, his number is an out-of-town number, and he's also from Nigeria. And so, I wasn't sure where this conversation was going and if he was a Nigerian prince and he was gonna steal all of my money. So, it kind of was a, I was like, "Are you sure you're not scamming me?" But then, you know, he said, "No, I talked to Amber. She confirmed," I was literally texting her, saying, "Is this real? Is he for real?" She said, "Yes, he's for real." So, he has created quite, um, an amazing platform to help us bring opportunities forward for these students, and like Zach said, matching them with their skill sets, their passions, and really helping them to become the, the best person that they can be. You know, you all are giving them foundations in the school, and this will give them that external piece, um, that, you know, Meredith's already been working on that and doing a fantastic job. Um, so it's just a next, a next step resource that will add, um, for these kids and, and, you know, where they're gonna be. And, um, and I, uh, would like to also ask if Ike can come coach some of our kids, you know, over winter, 'cause we do have some kids that would like to be trained. So, yeah, I'm there, I'm there for that, too.
He, he does offer private lessons.
All right. We're, we're in. We got some soccer players. And thank you so much. I'm gonna let Tisane take over, and he can explain what the platform is and how it works, and, uh, hopefully you'll, you'll see the excitement behind it.
Thank you so much, Stephanie. Thanks, Commissioner Zach. Thanks, Meredith. Um, hello, Board of Directors, as well as the participants of the Ohio County Schools. My name is Tisane, and I am the founder and CEO of Hassel. And as you've all heard, Hassel is a startup company, and our mission is to try and connect students in the area to employers. That way they can start figuring out what it is they wanna do, um, as they kind of progress through school. So, it could be via, um, workplace stores, job shadows, internships. So, anything in perspective of awareness, um, career discovery or exploration is, um, all, all the way to commitment is what we're trying to achieve. Just a brief, uh, brief background about myself. I graduated from Wheeling University about maybe three or four years ago, and then, um, I moved to Arkansas for a job. And the reason why I moved was because while I was in college, you know, everything people were telling me was that there really isn't anything to do here in Wheeling, you know. So, that mindset was kinda what I carried, as well as my peers around me, who were like, "Okay, once we're done with school, we're just gonna move out," because we didn't see anything here. So, um, after I moved, after I, I got a job, I moved to Arkansas. Um, I was working there, and I got to mentor and intern, uh, during my work. And I just kinda saw how, um, really, I guess, early it was for them, you know, trying to navigate that system and what it took to get into that position. A lot of them needed that connection with, um, that they had their family members that were then able to kinda give them that opportunity to intern. And then, when you look further down, we have people or students who are not, um, able to get into those positions or opportunities because they don't have, you know, family member or network, you know, to get an access. And we saw that as a, we saw that bringing a form of disparity. So, um, I kinda just reflected a little bit. I was like, "Okay, what can we do to ensure that, you know, other students that don't have all these privileges, um, are able to get in the same position?" You know, that way they can start, you know, building their skills, or building their portfolio, or figuring out what exactly they want to do. That way they're not left behind. And it just kinda dawned on me that there is, uh, there's an opportunity to work with, um, local employers, uh, to try and create as much opportunities as we can for the students in our communities. And that was one of the reasons why, um, I started this company. And when I did, I was like, "Okay, I'm just gonna come back to Wheeling," 'cause, you know, I, um, I came to Wheeling as an excellent student in twenty thirteen. I was here for about a year, um, had amazing host families, and then I went back home to Nigeria, then I came back here for college. And, um, this place is pretty much like a home to me. And, um, I have a lot of friends here, I have a lot of family, so this is the perfect, uh, place for me to kinda start this business. And working over time with, you know, the county, Stephanie Zach, um, has been really tremendous and helpful. So, thank you guys so much for all the help and support. Um, but, um, over the past few months, um, we've, we've kinda launched, and, uh, we've gotten a lot of traction from the schools. We've kinda primarily targeted, uh, the colleges first, and, uh, we've had numerous conversations with employers in the area, and they have amazing opportunities and plans, uh, for building their pipelines. I've talked to a lot of students as well on high school level, as well as the college level, and just seeing how the, um, the opportunity for them to navigate, you know, their decision-making has come from, um, their ability to be in positions where they were able to figure out, "Okay, you know, I got an internship here, and this is why I figured out, okay, I'm not really good," you know, at talking or working with people. I like to just kinda be isolated, working on my computer. So, now I'm going to school to, you know, be like a computer scientist or programmer. Or I do enjoy working with people. I do have, you know, um, the ability to kinda, uh, relate with people. I'm empathetic, so I wanna do something with social. Or just seeing that inspiration, um, has just kinda inspired me as well to make sure this is impactful, um, to our students here. So, we are working right now to get as many schools, as many employers, and put it in the platform that we can start connecting, you know, our students. That way they can start navigating, you know, their life and what they wanna do in terms of, um, career exploration and decisions. Um, what I would say, um, right now is the schools here, uh, we've talked with a lot of academiers, a lot of, um, a lot of staffs as well. They're doing a tremendous job in getting our students in front of these opportunities, but there's still room to do more, and, um, I think we can be a little bit more greedy. And that's why we, we feel like, you know, with this platform, we can get as many employers as we can, and then try and work with the schools here as well, um, to get all our students on board it, and start really early, um, with them. 'Cause, uh, right now, the main focus is with college level, college level. But when you look down, um, below, there's still room for people, uh, for students at that level to start figuring out what it is they want to do. And, um, just looking at the plans that employees here have, um, we feel like this is a platform that will, uh, do a great job and, um, have as much impact here in Ohio County, um, as we try to kinda just, you know, help, uh, with growth and retention, as well as connecting students and helping them kinda explore what it, it is they want to do. So, I am grateful to be here, and I'm looking forward to, um, potentially working with Ohio County Schools and making this, um, an impact here, um, in the Ohio Valley. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Questions? Yeah, I, if I could dig into the weeds real quick. So, basically, a kid wants to do, uh, say they wanna, uh, be a baker. So, that you're going to work with, uh, the businesses in the area that do baking?
Exactly.
Maybe at a restaurant or whatever, and you're gonna, uh, hook them up with that particular business to, to serve as an intern and mentor, and they would mentor them?
That is exactly.
Is that basically how it's gonna work?
That's basically how it's going to work, yes. And, um, uh, we try to also work with schools as well. So, we have schools that already have, you know, established key contacts that can also kinda help, um, coordinate, um, all of the operations and logistics. So, we work with the schools as well to see what exactly it is they need. Um, they need us to go talk to an employer as well to get them on board it. Uh, we do that on their behalf. Um, but yeah, so we take all of that and then kinda get assessments from a student to show all their skills and interests that you mentioned.
Yeah. Our, our number one responsibility, uh, as a school system is prepare them for life.
Right.
To prepare them to move on to the next level. So, that would be a wonderful bridge. I think this is a fantastic idea. I love it.
Any other questions?
Uh, my only question was going to be how many students we thought would actually take advantage of this, but Meredith, you mentioned that with the new personal finance class, every student at Park will eventually have to take...
Yeah, every, it is state required that every student in their eleventh or twelfth grade year take personal finance. We have decided to keep it in the eleventh grade. We think it's a great time for kids to get really serious about looking forward to their future and having their whole senior year to kinda plan that out. So, we would have all the eleventh graders on the platform. Uh, we would work with parent consent. That's part of the MOU that you guys see. Um, and what you were describing, you know, this idea of internships and shadowing is becoming more and more, um, discussed and, and an opportunity. What we would like to do is with our jobs for West Virginia, that's, a lot of kids will leave seventh and eighth period to go work. Uh, we really have so many slots for that. So, we would love to prioritize our kids that have legitimate internships as first priority in that jobs for West Virginia. So, they're really working and moving towards career pathways rather than just, not that there's anything wrong with Taco Bell, but as an example, there's a difference between going and doing your internship seventh and eighth period with McKinley when you wanna be an engineer and going, you know, a fast food route, you know. And so, we would prioritize those internships, which we're hoping to build through the businesses. Um, so, yes, a great bridge, I think is a good, a good word to use, for sure.
And you see a lot of value in this for our high school students, then?
I do, especially because we're on the startup end, right? Like, when I talk about career clusters, I'm talking about the sixteen that the state of West Virginia describes, and I've shared those with him, and they are gonna be, you know, connected in that way. If my career cluster is, I don't know, government, right, then that, the platform will know that I'm a government person, and here's the government jobs that we have available in the area. So, building those connections in those ways are something I don't find anywhere else, especially this local. Yeah.
Great. Thank you.
Any other questions? Um, we've, we're presented to MOUs and a contract. I'd like to table it till next week, 'cause there's some provisions in this contract I gotta look at in relation to WV ninety-six. For instance, there's a confidentiality provision we can't agree to because Open Proceedings Act. So, we're subject to FOIA requests, as is the county. So, I just need, I'd like a chance to align that, bring it back next week on the agenda, and we can vote on it then if that meets with everybody's, uh, agreement. So, thank you for the presentation. I think it's a great program. Uh, I think that would make, uh, a friend of mine who's passed, Tom Burgoyne, very happy, 'cause that was always his concern, or how are we helping kids connect at a younger age and not fall through the cracks because no one was introduced. So, I think this creates a really interesting platform. So, thank you for, for coming out on a cold evening and presenting to us, and we'll look forward to moving forward.
Thank you.
Thank you, Zach.
Thank you.
All right, so that takes us on, so on to...
Yeah, thanks.
Uh, to what is now six point two, school safety, anything?
Nothing tonight.
Okay, then, six point now three is wellness policy. Ms. Griffin?
Okay, good evening. President Croft, members of the board, Dr. Miller, and guests. Um, what I've given to you is, uh, the Ohio County Schools Wellness Policy that really has not been updated for several years. Um, this is a policy that's required by USDA, so every county, um, across the nation, they do have a wellness policy. All of the sections in the policy, um, as far as the, um, nutrition education and promotion, physical activity, all those, um, main headers are required. So, those aren't things that we just came up with as far as how to put it together. What I've done is I've gone through here after countless meetings with the wellness, uh, team, uh, suggestions from the central office staff, um, even some input from principals. Um, I've looked at many other wellness policies from other counties and, um, received some guidance also from the State Department. So, um, what's in red there are changes that we'd like to add, and obviously the strike-throughs... So what's in red there are changes that we'd like to add and obviously the strike throughs. A lot of it is just extra verbiage. It's not that, it's not important or it doesn't matter. When this was created, even long before I arrived here, there's just a lot of things in there. It's a lot, a lot of pages. So I'm trying to concise this policy as much as possible. And one of the recommendations from the State Department was to take out a lot of the specifics as far as the nutrition guidelines and all that and just say that you're following, you know, state and federal guidelines. In the event that anything changes, you know, for whatever reason, then you don't have to go back and completely change the policy again to meet those new guidelines. You know, I talk about this a lot at the principals' meetings. And one of the main things that the State Department did mention that they want in here is how classroom celebrations, that needed to be specified. And that really wasn't in there before. So, you know, any classroom celebration at the school level must be adhered to as far as all the nutrition guidelines. You know, we can't have grandma's cookies coming in and, you know, some people get so upset about that. But we don't know how grandma's kitchen, how clean it is. And we also have a lot of kids with food allergies. So not only for food safety, but also the medical safety of a lot of our students. Because we do have a lot of students with food allergies and sensitivities. And the other piece that we kind of put in there, a lot of folks, even at the central office, and I can't believe she's putting that in there, but to allow to, each school to have one per semester, school-wide celebration, should they choose, that doesn't meet the nutrition standards. And that is something that I consistently saw in a lot of other counties' policies. Just in a way, it doesn't mean that those standards don't matter day in and day out.
So pizza parties are still okay?
No, they're not. But if, you know, you're having a field day or a big carnival day or something where the entire school community is brought together, it is difficult sometimes to meet the requirements. So to say that as long as it's approved by Dr. Miller, communicated to me, if they should so choose to have an event like that, they could. And so I've seen that.
The policy is written, meet both state and federal standards?
Correct. I got a complete pass from the State Department. She said it meets all requirements as changed, as long as it's approved. And then we just put it on the website and we're good.
Okay.
It looked like some of the stuff that was taken out had to do with like bringing families into the, like, well, the first thing is it's no longer incorporated into the curriculum. It looks like that was stricken and then.
Yeah, and I don't really know, you know, that's.
Were we doing that?
I don't think we were doing that really anyway. That isn't something that I put in this policy. I think it was in there from the beginning. And I think a lot of the policy, when it originally was put into place, was verbiage that, you know, they suggested. And so all counties were kind of using these, this exact same thing. But when you really sit down and look at what we're doing, you're not doing that, so.
Okay. I mean, is that something that we think is important to try to incorporate that into the curriculum and try to bring families in on the wellness education?
I mean, I think it's important to have, yes. And, you know, I put on there that, you know, when the schools have wellness committees, they should invite parents. And this is actually something Dr. Miller suggested that even tomorrow at the parent advisory group, that, you know, I'll present this as well. Just to communicate more and make sure that that information is out there. And each school does have a wellness coach that is board-approved already. They try to meet, you know, as often as possible, but sometimes that bridge to informing families what's going on, we need to just be a little more visible with that. So, you know.
So is that part of their role already, the wellness coach, is to facilitate that?
Yes.
Like.
And kind of be that champion in the school.
Okay.
You know, they might have a bulletin board. They're kind of just really the person that's the go-to in addition to the principal, just to kind of lead all those events.
Yeah. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Mr. President, I had, part of the policy states that they need a board of education member to serve on this committee. I'd be glad to serve in that role.
Perfect.
If anybody, unless anybody else would like to do it.
I think you're the man.
You're all knocking down the door, so it looks like it's me.
Yeah.
So with Mr. Garber volunteering to be the board member to serve, may I have a motion to accept the wellness policy, which is policy number 2019.01 as amended. So moved. I have a first, may I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes unanimously with Andy serving. Six dot three, winter stipend.
Yes, Mr. Croft, board members. Mr. Bennet and I have spent a significant amount of time. We recognize and understand the hardship to all of our employees at this time. And we've worked with Mr. Croft and other board members as well over the past six, seven months to create a way that we could help all of our employees by providing them with a one-time health and wellness stipend that we will ask all employees, both service and personnel, to complete a task, a few tasks, submit that information and be awarded for their time outside of the school day, $2,000. Again, we recognize the hardship with PEIA and all of the things that are taking place throughout the state with the public school system. And we thought that now would be a good time to provide all employees with this assistance. Mr. Bennet?
What Dr. Miller said, especially the one time, we've looked extensively at our finances to make sure that this is feasible. You know, we have a healthy carryover from last year, almost $19 million. It's no secret that we prepared and that is the reason that we have this healthy carryover. We had inflated tax revenue. That tax revenue is going to go down, but we prepared. And as a result, we have this to do the right thing and help our employees. That's, that was the goal behind all of this and once we were comfortable, we brought it to you.
What's the cost?
Sure, so roughly for every thousand dollars that you give to the entire staff, it's about a million dollars cost to us. So I would expect it to be a little over $2 million.
Again, as a reminder, this is not a, not to be mistaken for a pay raise. This is a one-time, hopefully the state will work out some kinks with PEIA and will be able to help our employees. But right now, again, going through Mr. Bennet and all of the finances that we have in place, we felt comfortable that our full-time employees could receive $2,000 and our part-time employees a thousand dollars.
And having looked at the grounds by which we can do this, it is permissible under West Virginia Code 18A-4-5 and 18A-4-5A. So it's within our authority. It only makes sense if we can save some dollars in other areas that we, that those dollars find their ways back to our hard-working employees. And that's what we're doing tonight.
Exactly.
Any questions for Dr. Miller, Mr. Bennet, or any questions about the legality of this?
No questions about legality. I just want to mention that there will be criteria for all the employees. They will have responsibilities that they will have to fulfill in order to receive the stipend. And it will be monitored by principals or administrators in the system, depending upon what their job is. So I personally think this is, this is something that our people deserve. They've worked hard, our test scores have been outstanding. We have been receiving accolades and recognitions. And we're very proud of our students, we're very proud of our teaching staff, and we're very proud of our service personnel, all of them. So I think this is a wonderful opportunity for them.
Are there any other questions? Hearing none. I have a motion to move forward with the winter stipend as presented by Dr. Miller and Mr. Bennet?
So moved.
I have a first, may I have a second?
Second.
A first and a second. Any additional discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes unanimously. Six dot four, Ritchie Elementary Playground.
All right, well, I'm a walker, so for those of you who don't know me, Amy writes on the principal over at Ritchie and I do not need that mic. So, I have to use it?
It's for online.
Wow. All right, we'll see how I do it standing still.
You can walk, just walk with the microphone.
Well, all right then. All right, so what I decided I was gonna do was come and tell you guys a story. I took over as the principal of Ritchie about four and a half months ago. And if you have not had, if you've not been to Ritchie recently, you need to make an excuse to come. When you go in, this is an incredible facility with just outstanding staff. And when you leave, you will feel good about yourself because the kids are gonna make you smile. And you will feel good about Ohio County. But when you go in, you also notice soon that our playground is just like one big flat top area. So what I thought was, all right, well, next year is our 100th anniversary. So maybe I could convince everybody that we could get a new playground by then. So I go to talk to the teachers and I'm prepared for all the kickback. And when I pitch it, what I get is overwhelming support. Well, that's pretty cool. Then I started to get some emails with, hey, could, maybe we could use this fundraiser. All right. And then I started getting people sending me things saying, would it be okay if I wrote this grant? Like, okay, this is incredible. But I'm still thinking I'll push it off a little bit. But then the community decides to step in and change my mind. Community members, LSIC members and PTO members started putting together all of these grants. They're like, can we send this in? Can we send this in? I'm like, well, the one thing holding this back is me. So what I did was I asked to be on your agenda so that I could, in fact, start collecting funds. We have not done that yet. But with your approval, I'll be able to. But you know what? I, that's okay because, okay, here we go. You're there. How do I advance that? Just don't read it.
You just point to me.
Excellent. Okay, so this is our current playground. I know, it's exciting, huh? Makes you want to go play. Now, the one instruction I did have was if you see right here, this is the kickball field. I don't know if you call it kickball fields or courts, but kickball is a serious sport at Ritchie. So that court had to stay. However, next slide. What we want to do is add this. And what you'll see when you look at it is we have different sized slides, we have different sized activities, we have some sensory items down here. We have climbing areas. And I know this has a technical name, but really it's that speedy thing that makes you really sick and kids love it. It has one of those. And we want to add this to our playground. Hit me one, oh, before you do that, this is by the same company that did Bethlehem's Playground and Steam Rods. So we have their bid and we do know that they put out a nice quality playground. Go ahead and take me one more. And I have such a, maybe? There you go. We have such a big blacktop area that really this only takes up this small portion back here. We still keep the kickball area, the little basketball court you can't see here, and all the runaround space. So bottom line is, we will need to raise around $210,000 to do it. We have not started putting out the grants or anything like that. I just wanted to come here, get your approval so that we could go ahead and start that. Are there any questions?
So. Yeah.
Not that easy.
Couldn't be.
Well, I mean, our approval to collect money is one aspect of it. Where are you gonna park the money?
Well, we have not created the account yet. However, I did talk to Steve about the need to create a separate account where all the funds coming in goes only to the playground. So that, let's say, for some unforeseen reason, the playground didn't happen, that money could not be used for anything else until we do roll it out.
Steve, would it be better to run it through the foundation?
Not necessarily.
So we can do restricted accounts within the schools?
Oh, yes, we do that all the time.
Okay.
Yes.
So it'd just be a restricted account and a donor?
It's segregated.
Would be charitable deduction if somebody just wanted to contribute? And it's also available for grants and community foundations?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
So from my perspective, terrific. Love to see the playground improved. And a key component to the success of the playgrounds that have occurred have been community involvement and buying. So could I have a motion to approve the acceptance of money in creating a special playground account at Ritchie?
So moved.
I got one, a first and a second. Do I have any further discussion?
I was just gonna say, I'm glad you're doing this. I really think that, I mean, is this a recent picture?
This is.
Because this kind of looks like you got it from like an old archives.
Days ago, I took it from March of '14.
1927.
I would turn this backwards, but I can't do it without her. But no, this is out of Mrs. Blaha's room.
Okay.
I just took the picture.
Okay.
Pretty cool that it was an over-cast.
Yeah, yeah.
I added to it.
Woo, boy. This is where our kids.
This is my car, right here.
Is there a horse and buggy in there?
Yeah, hey, very, very savvy on your part to make it.
I don't know, another gravy.
No, but truly, I'm glad that you're doing this. I love that our kids hopefully will have a little more variety out there during recess in addition to the kickball. So, yeah, so thank you for that and I look forward to seeing how this progresses.
All right then.
Mr. President, just a quick comment. I've walked in your shoes there, Ms. Ritz, trying to raise money for playground. It's not an easy venture. So I'm gonna warn you ahead of time, be prepared to put some time in and energy. Beat the streets a little bit, see what you can do for local businesses, write some letters, get a committee together that will, you know, with people from the community, not just your parents, but people from the community. And this goes right along with the health and wellness there. Ms. Griffin, I'm sure she may want to be a part of, maybe be a part of that.
I'm forming this committee with not just, you know, my parents.
Right, exactly.
Well, and just food for thought, but have you ever heard of a Gaga ball pit? It goes by other, okay, so I tried to, I tried to sell that to Steam Rod and Triadolphy for years, they're awesome. Kids love them. I could testify to this, having done it at, they'd be a huge hit. They are not expensive. Any, you can put 40 kids in there, like everyone can play and just the way the game works, it's very inclusive, a lot of kids can play and it's a lot of fun. So you have a lot of extra space, maybe I'll send you an email with the links.
Please do.
Yes. Oh, do they have one at all?
Awesome, because it's walking distance.
I just have one quick question. In addition to the equipment, in the quote here, it says, you know, you're gonna have an issue with your asphalt not being able to hold it. Any plans for a site prep before?
Yeah, what we have is the asphalt is set to hold it, but I wanted, and I don't know any of the technical terms, but you know, when you got a playground, like that softer, cofter type stuff. They gave me an original bid without that and I asked them to add that on because I wanted that extra stability. Because, well, we're elementary, we are gonna fall.
It's a safety thing too, big time.
Okay.
Exactly. So, yeah, that was added in for me.
Okay.
All right, we have a first and a second. All those in favor of moving forward with this and creating an account at Ritchie, please signify by staying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes unanimously. Good luck, Ms. Ritz. All right, the consent agenda is missing now 7.2 because we've tabled that till next week. Anybody want to pull anything off other than paid bills?
Could I pull 7.3? I just want to make a couple comments about policy 1000.
Sure. All right, 7.3, Andy, you want to kick this off?
Sure, just very quickly, I went through the policy a while ago. But I highlighted a couple of things that I thought were really, really important. And I'm glad that they were included in there. In the first, under master policy, aligned with this mission, the board is committed to a long-term vision of education that extends beyond academic success. I love that. I think that's a wonderful perspective and goal to have. It's not just we're teaching them inside of the school, we're also teaching them, you know, beyond that. And we've taken a step in that direction with what they presented earlier today. And I love the next paragraph. Instruction must be student-oriented, informed by developmental levels and individual learning needs, and using reteaching and data to analyze. Fantastic. Just love that. Sure, just very quickly. I went through the policy a while ago, but I highlighted a couple things that I thought were really, really important, and I'm glad that they were included in there. In the first, under master policy, aligned with this mission, the board is committed to a long-term vision of education that extends beyond academic success. I, I love that. I think that's a, that's a wonderful perspective and, and goal to have. It's not just we're teaching them inside of the school. We're also teaching them, you know, beyond that, and we, we've taken a step in that direction with, with what they presented earlier today. And I love the, the next paragraph, instruction must be student-oriented, informed by developmental levels and individual learning needs, and using reteaching and data to analyze. Fantastic. Just love that. I'll, I'll get to the point here real quick. Very much engagement. School leadership ensures that schools can tailor instruction approaches based on specific needs of their students, using test data, and obviously those kinds of things to gear the instruction for the students. I, I won't go into depth on all the other things, but I was very impressed with the policy and the new semantics. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Paid bills. Molly, you want to kick this off?
Oh, yeah, just one. Check 225957 to Siemens, $2,830. Bridge Street replaced fan motor. Is that a labor charge, or does that also include the cost of the fan motor? So both?
Both.
So that wouldn't be included in our contract with them?
No.
Okay, that's, that's my only question. Thank you.
Andy, do you have anything?
Yes, sir.
Andy, do you have any paid bill questions?
Yes, sir.
Bernie?
Yeah, I just have a couple. 225875 from Atheny Motor Truck Company. Looks like new school buses.
Yes.
Are those?
Finally starting to get some.
I know, right? And we're reimbursed.
Well, over 12 years.
Okay, but we are, there's money coming in for that.
I mean, it comes in very slowly.
Okay, okay.
Not as fast as any of us would like.
Gotcha. Okay, and just one quick question on 225853 for achieved behavioral health for $28,300. Is that a monthly charge, or is that culmination of?
You know what, let me take a quick look. That, that might be two months. No, I'm wrong. That is, that is one month's worth of work.
Okay.
Yep.
I think that's it for me. Thank you.
Just, just a couple, not specific. On the buses, are those air-conditioned? So how many do we have now that are air-conditioned?
All of our buses are air-conditioned.
Nice. And Steve, with the panhandle planning invoices, what are your thoughts on those being covered by insurance?
Well, the, the ones that are marked flood will either be covered by insurance or FEMA, one of the two. The Tridelfia, the Bethlehem, and the Wheeling Park, I, I don't believe they will be. That's not covered under an event that I'm aware of.
All right, that was the only questions I had. So can, putting the things back into the consent agenda, so items 7.1, 7.3, 7.4, 7.5, 7.6, I have a motion to take those consent agenda items as presented. So moved. A first, may I have a second?
Second.
A first and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes unanimously. There are no delegations. Board member comments. Molly?
Hi, nothing further. Thank you.
Anne?
I just want to say I think it's great that we can do something for our staff with the High County Schools, and thank you to everybody that, like I say, it, it takes a village is true, and I think we need to get it out there that a High County Schools is the right place to have your children. And like I say, we try, we, we try to help us, help them all, and, and I can't believe all the activities that High County does provide for the students. And I do want to say the Festival of Sound is coming up this weekend, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, and that is a wonderful event. If you've, you've never been to it, it's really wonderful to go listen to the students. But like I say, I just think that more people need to understand that we're trying to do the best, and I think we are the best. Thank you.
Thank you, Anne. Andy?
I was just going to reiterate what Anne said about the Festival of Sound. That, that starts, kicks off my Christmas season every year. I love it.
Thank you. Bernie?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
Nothing further from me. Future meetings, Monday, December 22nd, 2025, regular meeting 6:00 PM at the board office. Monday, January 12th, 2026, regular meeting 6:00 PM at the board office. And Monday, January 26th, 26th on, end 2026, regular meeting 6:00 PM at the board office. There be no further.